I'll call this meeting through order tonight. First, Karen, we have a public hearing number 1904. Would you please read that notice for our records?
Notice of public hearing 1904. Notice is hereby given that the Montague Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 17, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Montague Town Hall, upstairs conference room, 1st Avenue A., Turnus Falls, Mass., at the request of Sharon Cutrell for a special permit to allow construction of an detached accessory apartment pursuant to Section 8.5.3b of the Montague zoning bylaws. The above-named property is located at 191 Greenfield Road, Montague, Massachusetts, and identified as Assessor's Map 26, Lot 25. There were three notices sent and zero returned. No written or...
Okay. Who is going to be speaking regarding this hearing?
Your chair.
Your chair, okay. You can explain if you'd like in your own words, and if we have any questions, we will ask you, but the reason for doing what you're doing. You have the floor.
Okay. I've been in the house since 1980, and at this point in time, I'm the only occupant, and it's a 12-room house. And I wanted my daughter and her family, Mark Nelson's one of, that's my son-in-law, and their three children are going to move into the main house, and I want to build an accessory apartment at the back as an extension off of the garage for myself. And we've submitted the paperwork to you for your approval, and Bill Butler is here. He's going to build the extension, and he could probably answer the more technical questions.
I just have one to start with. You said the accessory apartment is going to be off the garage. Are they going to be attached?
Yes.
So that the new apartment and the garage will be attached?
Yes.
Contritor, if he has anything he wants to say.
I don't know. I'm not going to make it look sort of blends into the architecture of the house, you know, woodside and same type of roof. Not a full foundation, but just enough to support the building.
No basement.
Do you have members in the board, do you have any questions? Richard, do you have anything?
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't get it. Well, I got a picture of the back of the garage, and then I got a floor plan, but I don't see a house, design of the house, and see how it conforms with all your... You just said you wanted it all to conform, and nothing that tells me how that conforms to the architecture of the house.
It's going to be flatboard.
Well, the way that tells me, tells me where the garage is, and it tells me where the... It doesn't tell me what it's going to look like when it's finished.
Yeah, we don't have a...
There's no rendering of that.
We have, do you have a plot plan?
But no floor plan.
I mean, there's going to be a...
You have a floor plan, but you don't have the outside plan, the way of the outside.
For that. There's no...
We're going to continue the roof line as an extension therefore. It's only going to be a one livable story with nothing above it but attic space such as...
Okay, so it's attic space that's above it.
We're just wanting it to look like it naturally belongs to the house with the roof line, and, you know, it was like it was all originally planned. I don't know how else to add.
Well, there's the garage, well, the kitchen and the garage, the roof over that, and the extension would be a continuous roof line, and because there's a slope down from the garage, it's going to be built out from there.
Right. I mean, I don't...
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, there's a picture of the...
Well, I understand that part of it, but I don't see the rest of it. So it doesn't make any sense to follow that.
Because there's no picture of the existing garage.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, there's, there's...
Picture.
What's that, this one?
Yeah, I have the floor plan. I had that part, but I was just curious of what it's going to look like finished. You know what I mean? Is it going to look like a big barn, I mean, out there?
It's going to be the same...
Is it going to be multiple levels, that kind of deal, you know what I mean?
One level.
All right, so from the front of your house to the...
From the garage. See, the front of my house is two stories.
Right.
Off of the front, off the main house is a kitchen and garage. The extension addition is going to be that same roof line extended, and it's going to have flatboards that match the house.
Okay. I think I got it. Do you have a, the entrance, is that from the garage?
No, that's going to be, there's going to be a... Do you have a picture?
I just have this. Yeah.
Okay.
And it looks like there's a door here from the garage.
The garage, if...
You can come up and take it.
Yeah, okay. Right here in the floor plan.
You've got that one.
The garage goes like this. Kitchen, main by the house. There will be a main door here, a little porch.
Because you have these label windows, so I assumed all of those...
Yep, they'll all be facing out away from the house, from the main body.
So this window is actually a door?
That, there'll be a slider.
Oh, that's a door.
Yeah, I believe she will, doing one of the slider right there, and just have a small deck as an entryway.
A sliding door.
Yep. Nothing connecting directly to the garage, so that was, or that was...
So, I have one more. So all the utilities are coming from the main house?
Like some are sewer. The sewer is going to connect over to the sewer coming off the main. We have town sewer, and we have well water. The well water will continue the pipe under the main by the house over with electrical. Electrical should come right through the garage. The sewer will actually be dug and connected out in the middle of the yard where that...
So the power's coming from the main house?
Mm-hmm.
And the sewer's coming from the main?
Out, out in the yard where the sewer currently connects over to the street.
Okay.
Same service.
Yeah.
What if I have a picture? It's okay. I got it.
First night, right?
Ah, I'm easily confused.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I said you're ready to vote.
I vote yes.
Yes. Okay. Alan?
Yes.
Bob?
Pardon me, I vote yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's five yes.
Thank you.
Do a good job.
Do a good job.
Yes. Well, I think that's why we have the votes.
Hey, listen, I got to please her, so I'm going to be doing my damnedest here.
If you have any questions, if any of you have any questions, you'll be, you have a 20-day appeal period.
Hey, I don't call it a knockout or nothing.
So for the next 20 days, you won't be able to do anything. Once that 20-day appeal period ends, you'll file your decision, and you'll file that piece of paper that I was talking about. All right?
And you have the piece of paper?
And I have it. And when I'm ready to send you your decision, I'll send that piece of paper with it, and I'll tell you exactly what you have to do and when you have to do it.
Okay, and that's what I get authorized and get back to you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can close that hearing, and we'll open the second one.
All right, we'll hold on just a minute. People who are here for 10 Swamp Road, I need your signatures or your names just to know who's here.
Can we take that into 191 Greenfield so it doesn't get lost? Now, right here, so, yeah. So we have to wait a few minutes. This is not on yet. All right, so on this one, now, there's bigger plans. So I'll have to share them. Here is what, here is what?
How many times we talked about this?
The people that'll be barking on this one if you want to come up to the first row.
Okay, thank you.
I'll call the second hearing through order. How about hearing number 1902? Karen, if you would do the same and read that for our records.
Notice of public hearing 1902. Notice is hereby given that the Montague Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 17, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the Montague Town Hall, upstairs conference room, 1st Avenue A., Turnus Falls, Mass., at the request of David Caramati for a special permit to allow construction of a detached accessory apartment pursuant to Section 8.5.3c of the Montague zoning bylaws. A waiver to standard 8.5.4b is being sought to allow electrical utilities to be separated from the existing single-family unit. The above-named property is located at 10 Swamp Road, Montague Center, Mass., and identified as Assessor's Map 42, Lot 101. Now, there were 10 notices sent, two were returned, and both were undecided. I have no written or anything else on that.
And who would like to speak?
My name's...
Explain it.
Yeah, my name's David Caramati, current homeowner. We built a house about four years ago, I think, on this, three years ago, on this lot, and it's sort of a modest home, well insulated. My wife and I just had a baby in February, and we were looking to expand a little bit, create a garage, and also create an apartment for my parents who are retired. And so the first floor there is a garage with a little bit of space for a workshop, and then the second floor is the accessory dwelling unit. So, yeah, mostly looking for a little extra space for my parents to be able to stay as well, give some help with some childcare.
You, you mentioned here about the electrical being separated.
Sure, yeah, since actually doing a bit more research on that, I feel that we can withdraw that request because we discussed with the utility company, and they were requiring a $30 a month charge for a second meter, and we wanted to be able to sort of plan for the future potentially. You know, we have an electric vehicle that we plug in currently, but after, yeah, reviewing that, I think that we'll be fine running electric off our house currently.
We have a 200 amp service.
We do.
So you have to have...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions? What's that?
How far is the proposed dwelling from your current house in distant above?
Thirty, thirty bucks. Thirty feet?
Richard, do you have anything?
I don't know. Everything seems to be in order.
All right. Sorry, we're doing this real fast.
Yeah?
Wish my kids would do this for me. If we don't have any more questions, does anybody here have any questions regarding it? Okay, then I guess we're ready to take a vote. And I'll start from you.
I vote yes.
And Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I suggest that's five to approve. It's true. You're good.
Thank you.
So David, which was much of the decision, but for minutes was probably within its lifetime. It is this thing that we've adopted in a lot of... So this would just say that...
It's like you don't have any questions.
That they have to wait a while. Okay, so I'll send this with, you know, along with the decision to you, okay? And you'll just have to have the notes, okay? And then just have it recorded along with the decision, okay? So when I send it to you... Okay, what was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks. Pleasure to meet you both.
Congratulations and welcome to Montague. Can't wait to move in.
All right, thank you.
We have to wait for a time scheduled, a special time, and we have to wait. Will be speaking on the next one. Would you like to come down?
Ninety-three, Ninety-three K Street?
Yes. Now, for Ninety-three K Street, I need everybody's signature here. So if you're here for Ninety-three K Street, Karen...
We have to wait nine minutes. So Walter can come up and use it. Mr. Walter, we have a few minutes set up. Alan, we wanted to expand a couple things. Can you do that with the board now?
Sure. So one of the agenda items was to ask the board to adopt a new accessory apartment application. So obviously, we're dealing with three different accessory apartment applications tonight. We realized that there's kind of specific information that they need to supply now that's different than most applications, and so we prepared a form that's kind of specific to accessory apartments. It applies to both ones that need a special permit as well as ones that just need a building permit. Apartments that are within an existing building now are allowed by right. So I think Karen sent out a copy of that application form, and was asking you to approve adopting that, and I think it'll be a good, clearer way for you all to get the information that you need, the most basic information, make sure that they met all of the standards that are in the bylaws in a really quick and easy way. And it includes the deed restriction that is required to go, these need to get posted at the registry as part of the special permit process now. Sets rules for any future buyer of the house, and it makes it easier to be able to transfer these accessory apartments from seller to buyer.
So, so that can't be done if it's filed with rights?
Yep, yep, and that covenant, called the deed restriction, has been reviewed by our town council and approved to form. The bylaws kind of require that this document be submitted now, not submitted, but filed as part of the application package.
Get the permit. Do we have any questions?
Walter, three days, right? So just... By the way, it's 30 days that they, that they file their...
Can you pray?
Any questions of Walter?
I don't, I don't. I guess just one off. Because it's going to be like retroactive, maybe inactive.
No, no, just moving forward, we'll just use the form, yeah. So they all, they all submitted under the old form, and they provided the same exact information, but...
It still gets submitted, but that still happens.
He's asking if the current one's the one tonight?
Yes. Oh, yeah, they still, they still have to go through that.
The same, it's just a form, right?
Correct. It's ju, it's just a form.
So you want a motion and a vote? That would you like?
I think so, generally, when, when the board adopts them. So, yeah, we'd ask for a motion to adopt the accessory apartment application form.
Motion to adopt.
Yeah, you don't have to be set on time on that, as long as it's on the agenda.
Good one. Just a call, Walter. Motion to adopt. Who's motioning?
I am. Motion to adopt.
All right. Alan seconds.
Thank you. It should make everyone's life easier, yours, the applicant's, and staff.
Yes.
In favor?
All in favor?
All right. Give us...
Okay. I think our new girl form requirement was 450 square feet.
Yeah, just, right, from all of our past meetings. Now, there is one in there. We do have to, we have to still vote on them and all, and there's a withdrawal in there that, back from January, when Marston's Alley with Turp, we hadn't met, and then when we did meet, I forgot to put it on the agenda. So it's on the agenda tonight to accept.
Chris, didn't there minimum sort of put it for an accessory apartment?
Minimum?
Yeah.
It's maximum. There's minimum building sizes in the building, seven square foot room, one center square foot room, 10-foot, stuff like that.
I don't have my cockpit to file on. I don't know. I didn't know about minimum.
No.
Chris, what's the match?
Nine hundred.
I know.
So you want to do this or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
The acceptance minutes from the CDA needing MRD from 11 and 18th July, January 10th issue.
Yes, in motion.
Someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next one is the withdrawal.
Okay, this is the Marston Alley one.
Motion to accept the Marston withdrawal, without prejudice.
I second that.
Motion's in favor, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and your last one is CBA 1901. It's a DPW from May 1st. So on the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
What are we doing?
1901, which was held on May 1st. That was a DPW, yeah. Can I see your package?
Okay, we want to make a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes from May, is it May 1st?
May 1st, yeah.
DPW hearing.
Maybe seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now we can go to the last year.
Seven o'clock? Okay, um, seven, I have seven, so...
Dawson will be speaking on this next one. If you could come down the other front, it's easier for us.
Has everybody signed the Ninety-three K Street? Thank you. Okay, I'm ready.
Karen, have a good day.
Okay. I didn't know we were having this.
Okay, I'm going to call this next public hearing through order. It's number 1903. Karen, if you please read the notice for our records.
Notice of public hearing 1903. Notice is hereby given that the Montague Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Montague Town Hall, upstairs conference room, 1st Avenue A., Turnus Falls, Mass., at the request of Nancy Fowler for a special permit to allow construction of a detached accessory apartment pursuant to Section 8.5.3c. A special permit for minimum street line setback relief is requested pursuant to Section 5.5.3b to allow 10 feet where 15 feet is otherwise required, and a waiver to standard 8.5.4b is being sought to allow all proposed utilities to be separate from the existing single-family unit of the Montague zoning bylaws. The above-named property is located at 93 K Street, Turnus Falls, Mass., and identified as Assessor's Map 6, Lot 47. There were 28 sent, 11 were returned, four... Eleven were returned, four objected, six did not object, one was undecided. I have two written, and I also have letters from DPW and the Water Department, which I'll go over first. From Tom Bergeron, Superintendent of Montague DPW, has looked at the plans for 93K Street. I have no issues with these plans. However, the contractor will need to get the following permits from the DPW before the project begins. A sewer permit, a road opening permit, a driveway permit, and a trench permit. And that was from Tom Bergeron. Now, Mike Brown from the Water Department, I have reviewed the proposed apartment at 93K Street and will allow separate water service lines to be fed from X Street. Now, to the two written... I have too close to the road, footprint took less than 10 feet even. It's not really an accessory apartment. It's a separate freestanding dwelling, basically, on X Street. Snow removal, traffic, parking, et cetera, already car-kid congested street. And the other one was, until I can learn more. I would like more information but am unable to attend on this, well, this was for the first one. Why not include more information to what is entailed? Proper lines drawing, et cetera, when sending these forms out? The reason being we can't do that is we're limited on postage, you know, we only have so much for postage. And that's it.
That's it.
Yep.
Taking through our speaker floor, 93K Street.
I am. My name is Tony Wenceski. I'm an engineer with SVE Associates and here representing Nancy on this special permit request and the relief on the setback and also the waiver on the utilities. Larry Rue is here and he can answer questions regarding the actual apartment structure itself. He's the designer of the building. And if you can recall, we were here last spring. And back at that time, we were operating under the previous zoning bylaw and it didn't allow for a detached accessory apartment. The new bylaw, which was approved in February, I believe, of this year, allows that provision now. And so, you recall, this is the property here, X Street, K Street, and again, there's an existing garage which fronts right on X Street. That garage would be removed. But you can see that the property and the orientation within the neighborhood is very similar to the other homes in the neighborhood. And I know that's one of the criteria that the board looks at when determining whether to approve or not approve of a request. So, we do this plan so that you can see the orientation and an overall contextual map of how things fit in. This little square in this area, here's the parking area for the new accessory apartment. Back on the previous one, we had back tucked in here, which required us to have a longer driveway down and more significant grading to be able to make that other property work. So, that's the contextual map. This is the existing conditions map, you know, the overall scale, locus map, where the single-family home is now and that. Two store, well, it's a lower level garage. This slopes considerably from X Street down, flattens out the K Street. So, this garage was tucked right in, so there's a lower level and an upgrade level garage right now. And that fronts about two and a half feet off of the right away of X Street. And so, in our plan, you'll see an analysis of what's required, what's there now with the garage, and what would be the improvement with the accessory apartment. Because the garage is gonna come down, it has to come down to be able to build the accessory apartment. As mentioned previously, the front setback required in the zone is 50 feet. The existing garage is two and a half feet. Once we do the accessory, we would get, push that accessory billing back to provide 10.1 feet, which is four times more than what is there, but it's still about 33% less than the required amount. Side setback required 10 feet. The side setback now with that garage is about 1.8 feet. This is all surveyed by us in the field. The side setbacks now, the closest one, would be 12.2 feet. The other side, we're over 15 feet. Rare setbacks don't come into play because they're quite a ways, quite a ways away, we're 80 feet and 70, 70 feet. So, this is the orientation. This shows the garage, the locks. There's walls, the garage here, you know, it's holding up slope, and then it's a fairly flat area in back of the house. The main residence is served by utilities off of K Street. We talked to the Water Superintendent and in our opinion, it makes much more sense to have the new structure feed directly from X Street for water, sewer, and we've got overhead power and communications online. So, your sheet number three of three shows you the proposed layout and fitting of that on the property. This accessory apartment structure is about 420 square feet of footprint. There will be a down, below grade storage area that Nancy will have access to below the accessory apartment. Accessory apartment will be at grade with X Street. To divide, you know, you have a parking requirement of a minimum of two, maximum of four in a development like this. Nancy's parking's in front. We're gonna provide one parking space for the accessory unit. In order to make the grade, to make that, we're going to put in a retaining wall with security, you know, security guards at the top. There'll be a little deck off the back and steps down to get to grade, and there'll be, we'll finish this walk to provide access into the basement portion of the accessory. Here are the utility lines coming in, overhead, cover source, horizon, Comcast, they'll take those into the building above the grade. The, I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything here. It's fairly small, so there's not a lot of, a lot of things to talk about. If we are successful in getting approval, one of the conditions that you'll put in, Nancy will do that, is to provide the board with a covenant that will hopefully, well, Karen will review that with the town attorney, it's okay. You might even have a standard form now because a lot of these are coming through the town.
We do have a standard form.
Yeah, so, we can, we can get that completed and get that recorded. Talked about the side yard improvements. And so, in closing, essentially, this apartment, I think, in our opinion, is consistent with the purpose of the bylaw, that section, providing housing. It doesn't detract from the neighborhood, it actually improves it because if you look at the way the garage is set up now, and it's closed, and once we put this in, it'll provide more sight-through, it'll be greener, there's less impervious area, and it's much less impervious area than what we had, which was previously approved last spring, because we don't have that long driveway coming down along the side giving back to this area to park the accessory. So, Nancy was, in my opinion, was smart to wait, and this new law going through in the string provides her to do a project that's much more pleasing and, in my opinion, is a better layout for her needs and it meets the purposes of the bylaw. To improve it over setbacks, a lot of these houses out here are not compliant with the, are not conforming to the zoning bylaw dimensional requirements, but this will be an improvement over existing, considerable, as I mentioned before. That's my presentation and about the site work. Larry can answer anything related to the structure. I believe we supplied you with elevations and floor plans of it. It's a very simple layout. It's really for one person. We hope that you'll favorably on it, and we'll take any questions that you might have. I'm just wondering how big it was, 400 square feet? 440. 440. Footprint, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a picture of what the house looks like to me outside?
I can give you a seat up close, but I can put on the tripod if you want to pass it around. This is the view from one angle, and this is a view from another angle. Can we keep this? Sure. This is the X Street up here. The footprint of the new building is considerably less than what's there's in the garage, because the garage is, it's like a two-car garage with another piece on the other side of it.
Larry, what is the distance from the proposed dwelling to, you know, to the existing house?
What's the distance?
Yeah, it's a storage area. It's like about 50 feet.
I don't have a scale, what do you mean? Probably 30 feet or so by thumb. Roughly around 30. I have a bat from my original. The existing garage was 1,025 square feet. So, this is, this structure's gonna be less than half of what the garage is in, that's there. And that garage, well, you can see, see this, they're the same scale, and you can see the size of the garage. I mean, it's almost within between the two property lines. That's, that's the existing garage.
Can you hand this to the people up there?
Sure.
The, our chief of emergency services.
Do you have anything else?
I'm formulating.
Okay. Yes, Chief Zelman brought it to my attention, and it's kind of a, should this project go
through, it'd be a little bit of a conundrum with the way that traditionally that I number the properties. That's one of the things I get to do, and I basically always number the property by where the frontage on the street is. And I don't like to change that because I like to do the same thing, but in this case, giving it a K Street address would be really difficult for an ambulance trying to find it. So, it would be a single piece of property with two addresses.
This is my big problem.
You know, I mean, the garage was like that. It was, it was a weird thing. It's strange to have a house that has frontage on two streets anyways. That's just, well, it's strange for us country folks. It's not that strange here in Turners.
It's not really, because we have alleys to this town.
Oh, yes.
Where you have a house on 1st Street, and there's an alley behind it.
And the only access is through the alley, yeah. That's something that is less...
I feel this property is 93K Street period.
Yeah.
Well, it's an accessory apartment.
Well, the other thing is, 911 is a, is a different animal, but, I mean, my, if you just said, if you just said, you know, what are you supposed to do, I'd say it'd be 93K Street, Unit 1 and Unit 2. That's the way the main ones are in front, because we can only have, we can't have 93 in a, or whatever the, what's your address?
93.
Yeah, 93K Street. That would be, you know, Unit Number 2.
We've talked about the Water Department, the sewer, there's electrical cable.
Yep.
How are those four companies that build up for the new accessory apartment?
That, that... Three and B? One and two?
I think it's very important.
One and a half, 93 and a half?
Well, it's how, I set the 911 addresses up. That's my responsibility, and so, I've already been kinda trying to figure out how I do it, and if I gotta wait till we got there and see.
What is the garage listed as now?
Has nothing. It doesn't have...
It's a garage.
93K Street.
Yeah, well, I thought you said it was on X Street and listed...
It is, it is on X Street.
The back of it.
The back of it.
That's it. So, it doesn't really have, doesn't come into play.
So, could emergency services, could they get there if they arrived at 93K Street? It's a small, it's a fairly small plot, but if an ambulance pulled up in the front, they can walk through the driveway yard of 93K and they get there.
Yeah, but they would go to the front door and not to the accessory apartment.
Yeah.
Which could be, you know...
It's very similar to downtown, there is a lot of, it makes...
Few minutes makes a big difference regardless of what's going on.
At least if you're familiar with the place, sometimes they'll access it from the alleys downtown if they're familiar with it, but generally speaking, they go to the front door and have to figure it out.
Look, they're going up four stories in a building. Takes some time to get up there.
If you look at the proposed building, there is no entrance on X Street. It's facing the back of the building on K Street.
It's my big problem.
So...
How do the cars get to that? They drive through on K Street? No, they come in on X Street, right?
They're coming in the alley.
Yeah.
Because it's a great difference there.
So, I mean, that's...
So, I would have to look at some presidents and talk to the 911 people.
93KX.
Thanks.
It's a valid point, but I think it can be worked out. Everything else is so good that, you know, I think Chris is very capable of working it out so it's labeled in an acceptable way.
But I guess my point is, for the accessory apartment, the bill for electricity is gonna be sent to 93K Street.
Well, mailing addresses mean nothing.
Well, it does for the power company and the water bill and the sewer people.
Mailing addresses mean nothing. We're about E911, that's what counts. You can, people have made up their own mailing addresses around every place for their whole life. They just, and they put numbers on it, and we have to say, no, that's not your number. But E911 is location-based, and, you know, they could have a P.O. box, they could send the bill to anywhere. I mean, I get what you're saying. I totally get what you're saying, and in this case, it would be, you know, to run the, all the utilities, you know, the other way would be crazy, would be a huge waste of resources and digging up everything.
I think the planner's got a solution.
He always does.
Walter Ramsey, Town Planner. Just to clarify a couple of points that were brought up. Bobby, you had mentioned about the entrance, and the main entrance is on X Street, not on K Street, just to clarify one thing. It's a little bit on the side.
Hang on, on the side, okay.
And about the billing for water and sewer, we posed that question to both the town and the Water Department today. They have no problem with billing two separate units on a given property. They do this regularly. It's not, it's not that uncommon for both water and sewer to have multiple accounts on a single property. So, the planning board reviewed this, knowing that this is kind of the first dry run through this new accessory apartment bylaw, and it's a detached unit, which is the new, a new type of use that's allowed. And the planning board is in favor of this. This is, this is the exact type of neighborhood where the planning board wants to promote seeing accessory apartments and infill development. They have no problem with the setbacks because virtually every primary building in that neighborhood is, does not meet the setback requirements.
Is not conforming, yeah.
And it's actually gonna bring it closer to conformity than the existing building is. However, the planning board did have some caution about allowing it to have completely separate utilities from the single-family house, and I was a little bit concerned about the precedent that it might set, so they wanted to, like, make sure the board kind of narrows down the considerations. So they wanted to like make sure the board kind of narrows down the considerations that are made if you're gonna be granting the special permit specifically to allow the, the separate utilities. Just to consider the uniqueness of this lot in particular, that it has frontage on two different roadways. And that, I would, I would ask the applicants to make a case that it's cost prohibitive to combine the utilities. I know that they're, they would have to run, there's a challenging topography and they would have to run the utilities a lot longer distance. So I'd be interested to hear, I'd be interested to hear about that.
Great is, is the big thing. I mean, you can run water back there by K sewer, we probably most likely be pumped because we've got a long way to go. And, and everything's right in front, everything is.
Yeah, so we're proposing that you consider the uniqueness of the lot, the hardship to the owner of combining utilities and also considering what, what it's otherwise allowed under the zoning. So under the zoning, they could come before this board for a special permit to make a two-family residence, which in theory can be a separate thing.
But doesn't.
So two families are already allowed in this.
Doesn't this, the special permit conveyance go with only the owner of the home? Or can't we make a stipulation to that effect? So then that way, if they sell it and somebody came back here and tried to build a two-family on it, that would be our safeguard. Do you follow me?
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, that would be the way to negate any kind of crazy improvements over there.
Yeah, the, the neighborhood might be, might like to know that accessory apartment does require that the primary occupant be the, be owner occupied. If it was a two-family, yeah, in theory, they could go around and rent out both.
Yeah, right. But we have the power with the stipulation to convey this special permit to the owner now. And if it gets sold, they have to come back here. We've done that before.
No, 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 so the way that it works now is that the special permit can be conveyed to the next owner automatically. However, the same conditions apply, it has to be owner occupied, doesn't matter necessarily who that owner is, but it has to be owner occupied.
Okay.
They don't have to come back to the board again?
They have to submit a state, a state, there has to be a notice process, but it's not a new special permit.
No, 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 and I think within the conveyance, within thirty days or something like that, they have to notify the board that they intend to continue on with the special permit. So the board gets notified that there's a transfer in ownership on the property. If they don't do that, then they lose that right, they have to come back through if they decide to. There's a very strict timeline for that transfer file.
Is there anyone out here that has any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about plowing.
Your name, please?
Oh, my name is Kim, I'm on X, I live on X Street, forty-three X Street. I have a question about the additional traffic that's gonna happen on the street. I think that it's a problem because I think there's already a lot of off-street parking for some of the apartments that don't have enough parking. There's a lot of kids that play on the street all the time. I think the additional traffic is gonna be problematic. I don't have, I am not able, because the street isn't paved all the way to the end, I don't have access to create a driveway. So I depend on parking in the street, that's gonna affect my parking in the street. So I may have to ask that the street continue to be paved so I have access to my, so I can make a driveway. The snow right now gets plowed and dumped pretty much right in front of there. So getting the snow further out is gonna be an issue. It's basically another house on X Street that I don't think the street can really support another house. It's a small congested street. It's not an alley, you know, it's a street.
Yeah. May I respond to that? They are providing parking off the street, which is gonna be an improvement. As far as plowing goes, that's up to the town to figure out. They should not have been plowing that snow in front of the existing garage. They did because.
No, it's not, it needs to be pushed up further for them to get a parking spot where they want.
But it's, and it's gonna be one car and one person. So you're concerned about a lot of traffic for kids in the neighborhood.
How do you know it's gonna be one car, one person or one car?
What?
How do you know it's gonna be one person or one car?
Because that's what they said.
But that doesn't mean two people aren't gonna live there.
So no one can come and visit and park their car right next street with a, they're not gonna park on K Street if the door is right on X Street.
How wide is the parking lot?
They're not gonna walk all the way up from K Street.
For this development, we have one bedroom. It allows for one, one vehicle, off-street parking. The garage, I think, is like, is it two things?
The garage is not used, it hasn't actually been used.
But it was and it could be refurbished and be used. So we're actually eliminating that and providing, as if, as if you were cutting the garage in half. We did supply a management plan as a requirement and as part of the special permit. The maintenance of landscaping, snowplowing will all be handled by the property owner, not the accessory apartment. So Nancy will.
The property owner doesn't take care of it now. There's junk all over the place, it's never been taken care of. So I don't, I don't feel confident that she's gonna take care of this apartment.
Never has taken care of it.
There's big cabinets rusting and laying out there since I've lived there, and wires and broken plexiglass. I have a concern about that.
I have one question. If, if like you said, if a visitor was to come, a second car or a temporary second car, now that the garage is pushed back ten feet, is that a level surface for the most part, level with the road?
Well, it is in front and nobody's gonna wanna pull on, that's landscape now, it's gonna be a lawn. Somebody could pull on that, but, I mean, there's not restricted parking on the street. You can park, they would have to find a parking space, it's a public street. And they would find parking just like anybody else that needs parking. They might have to walk away to get one. But that's not dedicated parking for anybody, that's a public street. So anybody can park in the street. We're providing parking for this.
At, 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 you have to be able to make a three-point turn to turn around.
Well, that's, that's a public street requirement and that is something that you can pick up with the, with the town.
Yes, sir.
Another option is to park on K Street and walk through the yard.
But it's not gonna happen.
How do you know that?
Why would you park on another street to get to the house on this street?
Because it's, it's one property and the owner is.
To walk through someone else's yard.
I think you're missing the concept of that accessory apartment.
I think you're missing the concept of, of X Street access to the house.
It's essentially another house on X Street.
People aren't gonna park on K Street and walk through the other person's yard to get to that.
We're talking about a visitor, which will probably be very infrequent.
We don't know.
Something important that you're missing on this whole project. Project before this was all approved, which was a tremendous improvement from the previous project, right? This new one, I don't know if you saw the previous one. But the previous one had a much bigger building, more surface area, a lot less green space, okay? That's been all approved, we could build that tomorrow. Okay, so this, we come back and say, we're gonna modify the plan and make it more conducive, more landscaping, more greener area, more air from water to just seem through, more peeling, right? And all previously approved. So from that perspective, I'd say this is a major improvement for what we could start building tomorrow. It's all been approved through the board. So I think that needs, and we already had all those issues, previous plan, parking, snow, all that different stuff. If they enter it off the same street, more different sort of utilities will grow off the different side than this side, which is not a big deal because it's just utilities underground. So just to kind of point that out to, you know, that what was approved previously, last meeting we came, the last meeting, last presentation.
Yes. Dave Farman, I'm on twenty-seven X Street, I've lived on X Street for about eighteen years. And I have, I was one of the undecided and I wanna express what my concerns are, but I'm not necessarily actually against this, but I, I want the board to hear some concerns. And the first thing I'd really like to address is, this is a house that you park on X Street and you enter from X Street. If you look, the main door is out the parking, it's an X Street house. And it's important that you realize our neighborhood is affected by this. It's a two-hundred-foot or so yard road with nine houses, now it's gonna be ten. I do understand that they used to use this as a garage, it was before my time. So more than twenty years ago, house been a garage, but I understand you still could. Yes, the, an important thing that I think I want Walter in particular to hear, but also the board, when the first presentation went out, we didn't really pay attention to it. It came up as an accessory apartment on K Street, the next street over, not really affecting us and we didn't really feel personally that was our business he involved with. Now I understand, and I didn't even go look at which house because I couldn't imagine affected me. Once I went looked at the property and realized this is a K Street, X Street house, it's different. Because you're gonna come up with this many times, with all the houses down on T Street that have, you know, a garage on one side and a house on the other. I think it's important that when you're setting a notice, you find a way to indicate this is actually affecting more than one neighborhood. I also want to address the issue of the care that's being taken of the garage and the property. The front of Nancy's house is beautiful, is well cared for, clearly a loved house, it looks great. The garage on our side is a dump. It has had a dresser out in front of it for four years, five years. The broken plexiglass finally got cleaned up. I understood that might have been somebody on our street that finally took care of it. There's a catalytic tree growing in the front of it, there's a drawer that is a jar. So I feel like my concern is, the owner of this house lives on K Street and cares about K Street. Are they gonna pay attention to what this looks like on our side? Are they gonna pay attention to, is their tenant gonna be a, basically, you know, are they gonna drive slow? Are they gonna pay attention? I feel they need a responsibility and so far, the owner of this house has really shown they don't view this as part of their property. That said, the garage is a disaster, it is street level, you literally walk onto the roof from the street. I watch the neighborhood kids do it all the time. I will be glad to see it go, I will be glad to see a nice, attractive apartment. I recognize, and I don't feel like you're understanding, the parking issue that particularly the houses on the end are going to face. This does really impair their parking. The map you showed shows a paper road, it's only a road beyond this garage on paper. In reality, it's paved only to the garage. So there is no turnaround, you know, right? I think that's a little misleading, you to put that up. But if you really feel like you can acknowledge and be chucking and taking care of or trying to make our neighborhood better too, I would support this more. Thank you.
Anyone else out here?
I, no, I'm sorry, I.
Yes.
I mean it, so I'm, I'm Jen Oddly, I also live at twenty-seven X Street. And in general, I feel like the project that you're proposing is gonna be an improvement to the neighborhood. I think the one thing that I wanna add to what people have said already is that it also feels like it's gonna be a significant construction project for our street. And so the hardship for the homeowner in terms of digging up their lawn to separate the utilities is offset by digging up our street to run utilities to the new accessory apartment building. And I get what you're saying about how the new footprint is smaller and it has less, it has more green space. But I also feel like separating the accessory dwelling makes this closer to a subdivision of what's already a very small lot and less like an accessory dwelling. Because it really is adding a dwelling to X Street, a parking space to X Street. And so I guess I'm, I'm curious, partly for some neighbors who aren't here tonight, to understand a little bit more what the timeline is for construction and what kinds of assurances we can have that the building process is gonna be attentive to the fact that we live on a, you know, like, there were twenty-eight notices sent out for this hearing. The other two hearings that you heard tonight had numbers of notices in the single digits. This is a dense neighborhood, there's a lot of people there. So it's, I'm totally in favor of this kind of infill housing, I think it's great. And I don't wanna be against it, but especially if this is gonna be kind of the first case for module of this kind of accessory apartment building, I'd really like to see it done in a way that shows care and attention to the neighbors who are gonna be impacted by the construction.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Other questions, are you ready to vote? I need to vote, we're voting on public here number nineteen oh three and it's the property will open it at ninety-three K Street in turn.
We have to vote on both of them separately?
Well.
Oh, you're sure, sir?
We have a special permit to allow X, accessory apartment. Special permit, minimum of a street line setback. And a waiver to the standard set to allow closed utilities to be separated. So I would say, yeah, you agree to be voted?
I agree, yes.
Okay, so the first that we will be voting on is the special permit to allow the construction of the detached accessory apartment.
Well, yes, there's a contingency with the cleanliness of the project, but I don't think there's one way to put that into this word.
Okay. Wait, you say if I ask them to vote three times and then go to the next person?
No, do, do one and then we'll go and do the second special.
Yes.
Hi, Bob, yes.
Yes.
And now the second part of it.
Yeah, the street line setback.
Yes.
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 The third one is the.
The standard to allow the utilities to be separated.
May I speak in Chinese?
Your honor.
If I could speak prior to your vote. Your vote should include some language, as Walter suggested, that if it were being approved, it was specifically because of A, B, C, and D, which I believe we were discussing, the, the unique situation and this, this had frontage on two streets. Different things like that, so, and I think we're afraid of, again, as Walter said, future president. So I don't know if, because that is now part of the meeting, meeting minutes, excuse me. If, and he's saying this, it's already just been done, so, nevermind. Do you feel there should be wording?
Now, what's wrong with wording it just the way that it is?
Okay.
Because, no, I mean, because it's, like you had just mentioned, because of the circumstances that it is, there's utilities on either side of that building.
And there's certain hardships, the drainage for the sewer, it's like.
Yeah, because you're gonna have to, it's gonna be a madhouse trying to get that connected from the house.
And not a two-family house is otherwise allowed.
The first time we come up on the next problem, we're gonna sit down before and figure out how we're gonna straighten it out. Because I can see a little bit could be a problem. Okay, this one is. Okay, this one is waiver for the.
Excuse me, just for a minute. So is there any wording going to this one or?
No, I think.
Well, we can't stipulate because we don't really have.
Go ahead. Just being part of the minute.
We could just say that it's special circumstance. Under special circumstances, the board is going to whatever.
Hey, what if one of the utilities decides they don't want to do that? We're not going to have a thing to say about it.
But they don't have.
That is the case. That's where the bills come from.
You're sending the bill to me, bro.
Are we ready to vote now? Okay.
Yes.
Me too.
Yeah.
You want mine too, Bobby? These are going to replace.
So are we going to make a motion to close the meeting now? You're all set, John?
Thank you. Check in.
Check in.
Executive session here soon. We're going to just madness out.
Or they could, if they could run a walkway between the two.
The utility end of this.
Like the, the neighbors.
Accessory apartment. We have some shit in there. Give me a big can of worms.
Anything would be better than that. No, I know as a kid, I would have been on that thing all. Well, you can't do that because it wasn't in the.
Anyway, thanks, everybody. Great to see you.
Great, nice seeing you.
I'm a little bit bad, man. I've been working out the sun all week.